Twenty twenty-two, and of course, everyone is aware that we do not transact business today, but we tried to set our agenda for our business meeting. And this would be, that would be a good time for me to mention that the business meeting will be delayed a week this month because there is going to... Next week is the County Administrator and County Engineers Conference that they have each year that's good educational opportunities. And our engineers, our administrators, and other support people, commissioners, anybody that can go is welcome to go. And so we'll delay that for one week. That makes the meeting mark on the seventeenth.
That's right.
And so we welcome Mark today for just sitting in the...
Hot seat.
In the hot seat, there you go.
That's right.
For the first time, and Mark's off to a good start. Okay. We start today by opening some bids for equipment that we've proposed to sale. We have some, a District Two flatbed trailer and a spray rig, and a District Three New Holland tractor. So have we got bids on both of those?
We do have, we have one bid for the sprayer.
Okay.
Which is Mark Foster for $200. And that's on the sprayer.
Okay.
And then District Two also has a flatbed trailer, and we have just the one bid for it also. And that is a Ray Smith for $2,136 even.
Okay, Commissioner, these are both District Two items, so you review those and we'll have them down so you can make your recommendations in our meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, one more?
District Three on the tractor, we have two bids.
Okay.
First bid is Ed Bell, $3,038 even.
$3,038?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then, that'll be it. Is a Dean Shelton for $2,150.
Okay. We will forward those on to Mr. Calvert, and he'll be able to make good recommendations as well on meeting day. Okay, any questions about the bids that we've received? And these, these are bids to purchase some surplus equipment from the county. These are not bids, normally we think about bids in regard to what we are purchasing, but this is a way to dispose of older and surplus equipment. All right. Any questions about that at all, any concerns? All right. Hey, Commissioner, we just opened the, you had two bids on the District Three tractor. And so we will, we get those to you, and you can analyze them and make your recommendation in our meeting. Okay, so we are to our guest in delegation, we have Ms. Sander, Sandra Schaefer. Ms. Schaefer, you're recognized. You can speak from where you are. If you'd like to come to the podium, you're very welcome to do that as well.
I'm just right here if y'all don't mind.
That'll be fun.
I had knee replacement surgery last year, sometimes it works and sometimes it don't. No, I had talked to Mr. Armstrong on a couple of occasions, and the first time I spoke to him concerning your road repairs and stuff on Sleepy Hollow and the road trail, he was very good by getting somebody out and filling in some potholes and all that. But I took some photographs and talked to some of the neighbors. We got up to the kitchen or whatever, and I took some photographs of the areas. Many of these are the same ones that you put stuff in the last time. But with all the heavy rains that we've had and stuff, the rain this did to the bottom of the hill here, it was flooded. So if the water stands on the road, some of the area, you can see what people are driving off the road. And they're actually going off of the road to get a rain on some of these potholes. Many of the neighbors have probably, they've had car damage. One lady has a busted tire. I know I drive a Pathfinder, and it sits up pretty high. But I actually have, my sister wants to come to my house. She has a sports car, a lower sport. She won't come to my house because of the car damage that she can incur on those roads. The road was originally paved back in the early nineties, from what I understand. I've lived there for twenty years. When I first moved there, nobody had garbage service on that hill. I was the first person there, you know, signed up for garbage service. We now have garbage, almost everybody over there now has garbage service. We've got the garbage trucks coming. They produce from one school bus that used to run on that road. And we have two school buses a day. So there's more traffic, even though this is not a through lane, a road anymore, but this is the green thing out for a hundred years. And Willow Lane used to come in the backside of the road, and it was a through road back in Walston. But I, that was way before my time, so I'm not sure when they discontinue that. But it not being a thoroughfare, I don't know if that's why, you know, maybe funds aren't getting allocated to it, because I know you have to, you know, you have to get more money for your buck. You have to put as much money as best use you can. But I understand that we had, you know, with this COVID business and all that, that we've actually gotten some funds for, you know, earmarked with the gasoline tax from government agencies and stuff. And then it's the American Rescue Plan Act that we've gotten some money, you know, that's earmarked to go towards road repairs. And I'm just wondering what, is there any plans or anything that we can get something done? Because we're slapping a bad day on the Gatorade, and it's, it's not working. And like I said, people are incurring, you know, car damage. You forget having a front end alignment done anymore. It's just one trip down the road. And I'm retired now, retired paralegal, and I'm, I don't have to go in and out every day. But I pity the people that do, because you can't drive more than ten to fifteen miles an hour and dodge the hoes. I've been run off the road twice by people dodging holes, coming around a curve, and on the wrong side of the road. The road is not even a lane and a half wide in some areas. And the road going up the hill to where I live, the side of the road is actually caved in and fell off. So you can't even get on the pavement unless you're on the opposite side of the road. And somebody's gonna get hurt. I mean, I just...
Ms. Schaefer, we're, we're very glad to have you here at our meeting. Always welcome the public to our meetings. We'll just recognize Commissioner Armstrong.
Yeah, I'm ready to talk to you. And y'all are not unique. There's a few of the dead end roads we've, we've, man, you can throw a rock and hit any road like that. The road I live on, the same way. You know, it's just more dirt showing than there is chip ceiling. But we're, like you said, the gas tax. I'm currently working on our list roads that I'll do over the next two years, and I'll, I'll take it into consideration. But now, I know we've had a drainage issue down there. One of the pipes has not been handling off the water we've been getting. I've got another issue I got on Bozy Green. Somebody had to clear cut some property and it's pushing more water down than what we used to have there. But I'll get over there and look at that and see if we can install a pipe or whatever.
Well, everything runs off that hill. And right where Sleepy Hollow is, the water just stands. And like I said, we've got, I think one of the pictures shows the water standing in the ditch, and that was a week after the last rain. So, you know, we're also getting mosquitoes, we're getting, you know, all, you know...
Well, there may be a beaver down, downstream.
Yeah.
We're running into that, like, counter of seven, it's almost two, within four foot of counter of seven, there's a beaver, so...
I know we're not unique or whatever. But like I said, many of the neighbors, which to me, they lived there when the road was first paved. And it used to be a gravel road. And they all expressed the same thing. We would have rather it just been gravel as to, as to what we've gotten named.
Right.
And I said, well, that's maybe, but then you gotta maintain that to a certain extent.
And I understand your frustration, because we see it up here every day, because our prices, like last year when we opened our bid prices, they're here now. Just our plastic pipe alone, up over 133%.
Yes, I add it.
130, so piping.
Well, I know we're not unique by any means, but like I said, it's, you know, it's been nearly thirty years since the road was paved. And, and I don't know if engineering has looked at the road or, you know, whatever, but I, I know that it's something that with the extra money that we've got coming in, maybe that's where some of the part of it, if you're...
Yeah, and we, last year, District One got the, that was first year for rebuild for District One, District Two, and what was it, $400,000 apiece? And was able to lay down about 25 miles of road. Next year, we needed to be a half million apiece, which still will go forward, you know, increasing cost of materials.
Well, I understand that District Two and District Four both have received grants from government. Are we, are you looking at...
Yes, we are not eligible on this new block development grants. We are not eligible, District One, every, every area we look at is above low to moderate.
It's an income.
Yeah, it's based off of median, how far the median income.
Well, I just know that, you know, there's more traffic there now, and the road is greening faster, because like I said, it hasn't been that long since you, you know, were out there and it's up. And it's, it's bad or worse, because when that water, especially in the winter time, when the water freezes where it's standing on that road, it blows those potholes, you know, those patches. It blows them out, and holes rip and deep. So it's just, you know, it's just to the point where it's, you know, like I said, called the car damage and things like that, and, and then stagnant, so...
I'm gonna try to have our road plan for next two years by next month's meeting, and I'll get in touch with you and let you know. But we'll get out there and do it with that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schaefer. We always appreciate the public involvement, and we're glad that you're here today. Okay, we'll move on to note that we don't have any pending new business, old business. Move right on to new business. Item three will be to consider approving our minutes. We encourage everybody to try to read those over before next meeting. To consider approving our claims for the month of April. Item five is consider awarding the bids that we just have received. For District Two, we had a single bid for the flatbed trailer at $2,136, a single bid for the spray rig at $200. In District Three, we had two bids for the $2,000 New Holland tractor, one at $2,150, one at $3,038. So commissioners, if y'all be prepared to make your recommendations in regard to those bid openings. We'll move to number six. And number six is very similar to what we approved last month with Avenue Insights regarding the collection of sales and use taxes and lodging taxes to include auditing services. The agreement we have with them is broken into two parts. One has to do with the gasoline taxes. We did approve that agreement last month. And this one, as I think Ms. Goode advises, would be forthcoming. And this one has to do with our sales, use, and lodging taxes. Number seven is consider sales holiday resolution. It's in our packs, and let's see. Mark, do you have any further information about that? Or let me take a look at mine. Okay, this is a back to school. Okay, school's just now getting out, about to be out. We're considering a back to school. But this is authorized through Code of Alabama forty twenty-three two thirteen. And it will be begin on Friday, July, here, I see it here, Mark. Friday, July fifteenth through Sunday, July seventeenth. And that will be a back to school sales tax holiday resolution for us to consider.
That has to be submitted back to the state by the county.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, very good. So give that consideration. Number eight is to consider approving, authorizing the chairman to execute the M4A nutrition agreements. And just in a way of reminder, that is a three-way agreement, where the M4A is a signer of that agreement. The municipalities, where we have a nutrition agreement, signs that, and then the county signs it. So it's a three-way agreement to provide those nutrition services there, plus all the other amenities that's provided through the M4A.
Those amounts are the same as they've been the last couple of years.
Any questions about that? Okay, if not, we move on to number nine, which is to consider the donation of 2.1 acres of county-owned property to the Blount County Economic Development Council. This property is located on Gillum Bend in District One. It's currently valued on the tax appraisal at $15,435. When that value is agreed upon and approved, the amount of that value would be credited to the budgeted support of the EDC for fiscal year 2022. Now, I'll say this, the $15,435 is pulled right off of, see, and I think I printed something on that. It's pulled off the tax information. Here you go, Commissioner. And I printed this map, because I wanted everybody to see where that is at. If you turn on Walston Road in District One off of 160, you know, that's the route to the transfer station. And you're gonna go down there about a mile, a mile and a half, and Walston Road takes almost a ninety-degree turn to the right. Well, Gillum Bend continues forward, and it's only public out to that next bend in the road. Then it is not a public road continuing on down into that area. You'll see parcel number four there up in the right-hand corner that I've circled. That is the 2.1 acres. I think it'd be advisable to ask our appraisal department of the county to take a look at that between now and the next meeting to be sure that we have a reasonable and fair market value price on that. It's kind of my gut feeling, when I looked at it, that the fact that it has limited access, you know, public road access, and although it's near the river, it does not connect to the river. So that's not gonna give it a lot of additional value. In fact, my recollection is it's pretty much a bluff off down to the river. So if it meets the commission's approval, I'll ask the revenue department just to take a look at it and make sure that we have a fair market value on that property. And again, if we make that donation to the EDC, they can use it to, they'll market the property and use the proceeds to offset their budget that we have set for them. And hopefully, it can be used in a way that will be beneficial in the long-term return better tax base to the county. Commissioner?
I spoke with Don this week, and he feels pretty good moving forward with this. So if it makes approval, we'll, we'll let the EDC take over.
Okay, any questions about that at all? Okay, if not, item 10 is consider board appointment to the 911 Board at large appointment to complete Mr. Ken Campbell's unexpired term. And we've rolled this forward a couple of times because it was the desire of the board to try to locate someone that would bring a, an accounting and business type outlook to the dealings there at 911. And that's been a little bit hard to do. In speaking with the director over there, Mr. Neil Brooks, he's floated out a name for consideration there of Ms. Annette Graves. And Ms. Annette Graves lives up in Blount County District Two. And there's currently not anyone from Blount County District Two that's on that board. Ms. Annette is a longtime and long-term employee of Community Bank, not Community, People's Bank. And she was a well-known figure here at People's Bank O'neana for many years. And although she lives in District Two, she's working in the People's Bank headquarters at Coleman now. But she, she would, if appointed by the commission, she would be glad to serve. And I think that's trying to get somebody that kind of fits the niche of what they're looking for. Currently, there's not a lady that serves on that board. And we have had ladies on that board in the past that, of course, all us men folks know brings a unique and important point of view to these, these type decisions that need to be made. So I'm just floating that out as a recommendation from, from Neil. I talked with Ms. Annette myself, and he's further talked with her to give her a full overview of the scope of everything that, that she would be expected to do. And she's agreed to serve if appointed. Now, there may be other thoughts or names that somebody had thought of since then. And so please express those if you do. Okay, well, if there's not, and if, unless there's any objection, I'd suggest that we put that on our agenda for consideration in our meeting on the seventeenth. Okay, number 11 is update on the fire department's fuel budgets. Don is not with us here, but David, was you gonna make a comment on that? Or, not to put you on the spot, but you're welcome to if you...
Yes, sir. Actually finished our report, I don't know, I was late. We're looking at, our annual budget is $60,000, and the actual spend is $5,577 in recent. That puts to 93.3% of the budget for the year. So we're encouraging our fire chiefs and fire departments to be able to use the same vehicles on the laws.
Well, that's, that's, that increase in the cost of fuels hit us pretty hard there. And this is just to keep us advised, commissioners, on the fact that there's no way that they might not be able to stay within budget on that. They are definitely gonna go over budget. And so any questions or concerns, or any thing that we'd like to discuss on that?
Chief of Nectar emailed me the other day, and I think it was, I can't remember his exact number. It's in the forties, forty range, out of ninety-seven calls. They had the one address of a lift assist of special needs.
I saw that report.
And that's some of the stuff our department's dealing with now. JJ and Clay reached out to me a couple of months ago, West Blount, and they were gonna go ahead and start self-policing then. And I feel like they've done a good job, but it's a concern, especially with the fuel prices like they are. Because diesel, some places yesterday was $6 a gallon.
Well, it's not. I, I thought about it that a lot too, Commissioner, because I did see that report. And, you know, we have our volunteers out there. Most of them are on jobs and have responsibilities their own to a large degree. And when they are consistently called out, it's because someone needs a lift assist. That goes way beyond the scope of what we're there for. And so I know that's a problem. I don't know what the resolution to it is, but I know that is a problem, especially in...
Well, I don't know the, the people, it's basically, I think, that are in District Four, I believe, in the Cleveland area. But, you know, stuff like that, I don't know. Maybe some of our local departments have reached out, some churches or something like that, and get some volunteers to go in there, because it seems we have like a daily basis. I mean, that's, that's just a thought and idea.
Okay, any questions for David or concerns about? We appreciate David, the fact that y'all are working directly with the Fire Association and those chiefs, so that they be very careful on this. Item 12 is consider a regiment for District Three. This is $292.50 received for signs from the Blount County 911. Number 13 is consider amendment for Fund 100 for the $49,495.25 that we have received from the City of O'neana. And that's their 50% payment for the, the new street that has been built and completed on the DHR drive.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, please.
We have paid the contractor retainage on this project, so the project is 100% complete. The project acceptance date was April 11th, 2022. The bid amount was $92,566. We had a change order for some fine grading and a manhole lift that had to be fixed. So our change order amount was $11,439.50. The final amount that we paid to the contractor came in at $98,990.50. So I think the original budget for this project was $100,000. So we were able to stay under that original budget. So the City of O'neana, you know, agreed to pay 50% of that project. So the amount owed was $49,495.25. And then Blount County's to pick up the 50%. And then engineering design survey and inspection of the project was done by Blount County forces at no cost to the project. And then District Three also did work on the road originally, getting it to a rough grade, so...
Yeah, the, the, it's to note that this contract price was for the pavement and installed the curb and gutter.
Yes, sir.
And that was agreed with O'neana. And I know, I know that they probably participated to some degree in trying to help rough that road in, but largely, Commissioner Calvert, you, your crew largely did the work on that down there. So we, we got it done. I think it was certainly a great deal for the city to get that done. But it's a, it's a home run for all of Blount County to get that street in and get this new DHR project completion. Now, I think they're gonna do some, their contractors gonna come back and do some work on their parking lot. And I think that project is gonna completely close out soon. Any questions for engineering on that? The item 13 is just to give permission for the budget amendment. We, we budgeted our part to pay in that. And of course, we budgeted to receive an amount back from O'neana, but we'd like to reflect a budget minimum and expenditure that covers the entire thing. And I'll just clean our bookwork up and reflect that we received this from the city. Okay, item 14 is consider budget amendment for recovery on insurance for some property damage at the engineered building from ACCA liability fund in the amount of $2,872.24. Number 15 is consider surplus of District One asset 3296, which is a Caterpillar mini excavator authorized to sell by best legal means possible. Commissioner, you have any comment on that?
No, I'm just going with...
Okay.
This, this machine's got 5,000 hours, it's about 12 years old, and just kind of ready to rotate it out. I've got a look at the prices on used ones, and I feel like we can get a pretty good, pretty good price on this one and rotate with me.
Okay, so 16 is to consider the purchase of a new mini excavator from Fund 200 financing that we put into place in the last couple of meetings. Commissioner, will you need to seek a bid invitation on that? Or would you buy that off an existing bid?
Yeah, existing bid.
Number 17 is consider Sheriff Moon's request, as noted in our last meeting, to use the Blount County Agribusiness Center for April 14th and 15th next year, planning forward to a new rodeo event. We don't anticipate that we'd be ready to host that at our new facility by that time, although I hope that we made tremendous progress there. But I think we just left it with the sheriff last month to look at those dates and, and let us know what his request would be. Am I remembering that correctly? All right, very good. Okay, number 18 is just to make an announcement regarding Somertown Metals and Abatement that was granted by the Town of Hayden. And of course, this did not require any action on our part. But the, the Town of Hayden has given a tax abatement which would abate the noneducational taxes for Blount County and the state of Alabama as well, as they're authorized to do so under the code. And Somertown Metals is a company from Somertown, Tennessee, that will be locating just off of I-65, is what we refer to as the Stuckey's exit. They're gonna have a, an investment down there, about $1.8 million for this facility, and expect to employ 50 employees over the next three years. So we just want to let you know that that is progressing, and the Town of Hayden did handle the tax abatement in regard to that. So I'm excited about them coming. That's gonna be a real plug.
It was. There was a, there was a travel center, a, a small one, that was looking at that property, and they got bought out by... property, and they got bought out by Seven Eleven, and they canned that project, so the property went back on the market, and this business looked at out of Tennessee and has bought it, so look forward to seeing them come, they're gonna create a bunch of jobs right in the area, and let's forget thanks for them.
I hope that they'll be participants in our project for multi-purpose too, because they produce the metal and build a lot of buildings across the southeast. Okay, number nineteen is just to update on the Veterans Park, I know this seems to be dragging out forever, but I did receive a packet from the National Park Service this week, it's gonna require me submitting some additional information on behalf of the Commission, but that is, that is progressing. Twenty, to give an update on the multi-purpose project at Cleveland, and further consider authorizing the culvert replacement on the North Access Road to the property. The Commission in our last meeting authorized two agreements. One was to authorize agreement with the landowner on the south end of the property, Mr. and Mrs. Terry Bennett, to have access across our property at future time if we were able to receive Fish and Wildlife funding for the bridge that we'll eventually build there, in exchange for the county taking out their pipe that they have obstructing the stream. Mr. Sher drafted that agreement, we went, made a couple little tweaks in it after talking with the Bennetts, and they had signed it, so that was authorized in the last meeting, and that was complete. And then further, the Commission authorized accepting that road on the north side as a public road contingent on the property owners giving easement, and they're not being any disagreement with the Town of Cleveland. Mayor Jones and I discussed that, of course, they have no objection whatsoever. Mr. Sher is drafting an agreement to, for them to sign, just so that we all have it in our records. But then further, last Friday after work, when the landowners had time to get in from work, Mr. Sher and I went and met with all three, they all three signed the easement that grants the county thirty feet on the north side of the center line of the existing road. And when you pull our landline through there, it approximately follows the middle of the road already, so that gives a nice, what can be a nice wide sixty-foot easement in there, thirty foot to come off of their property and thirty foot to come off ours, which as the Commission instructed, does go all the way to the back property line of the county property. So, that even takes in a couple hundred feet where there's not an existing road. So, I just want to report that those actions that were authorized by the Commission in the last meeting were completed, and so, as we look forward to what the next step is, I'd like for us to consider and have some discussion on going ahead and replacing that culvert there in a permanent way to give us good access there on the north side of the property, noting that we hope that we'll need to be getting in and out of there, and that a bridge will not be built across that stream for, you know, some time yet. So, Dustin, what, what are, what are you thinking in regard to that? Can you give us some ideas and what potential costs may be? And of course, these costs would come out of the money that's set aside on the county's part for this project, and not out of any Commissioner's personal budgets.
Well, you could go back to the corrugated metal pipe, it'd need to be at least eighty-four inch diameter, thirty feet in length. That's gonna cost you about six thousand dollars for the pipe, and then you're gonna need some type of teflon on either end of the pipe, so contact makes a flared end section that looks similar to this. They're about sixty, sixty-five hundred dollars each, so you need two of them, so that'd be another thirteen thousand dollars. So, with freight, it'd be around sixteen thousand dollars. So, metal pipe is gonna cost you twenty-two thousand dollars, and that's just the material for the pipe. If you do a concrete pipe, it's probably gonna cost thirty thousand dollars for the pipe with end treatments. I'm not aware that the county's ever installed a concrete pipe, so it might need to be done by a contractor. I know in County Route Five, we put concrete pipes in, the contractor did that work, so you guys may get aware that the county may have, may have installed a concrete pipe.
We can actually concrete them if we want concrete. We've, we've done that on Raggedale Road, set those for what I, how I required, we said concrete pipe. I would rather see instead of those flares, maybe some head walls with veneer rock on it, and it costs a little more, but it's a lot of money to just put that kind of looking pipe in a place like that.
And, and we want it to be as permanent as we can be, because that-
I'd say we'll go ahead and set the concrete, we can set the concrete pipe.
Yeah, we, we've set a few in District Four when I worked down there, many things, getting something in there to lift them.
Yeah, yeah, they just take a trackhoe in there, use a bar to chain, so.
We can do a type one, we've set a few, so.
Actually, I'm worried, a jig that the City of O'Nealna's got, that actually sets those pipe, we can, we could actually set them, there won't be a problem setting them, but.
What's the diameter you said?
Eighty-four inches. The weight is the only problem, you know, we got something to lift them, that's not-
I think my trackhoe will do that, I believe. Also, though, still, I think the, using the regular head walls and the veneer and the rock will look a lot better than those.
Definitely.
It costs a little bit more, but it'll look better.
It'd be permanent.
Yeah, it'd be permanent.
I was, I'm telling you that-
We can bring my trackhoe down there also, if we needed more than one.
The, the interest in this project can, continues to, to grow, and I think that looking nice, I'm, I'm with you on that, Commissioner, be it making it permanent and making it look nice, I think would be awesome.
With, with the concrete pipe, we will have to put a bid out for that, so it'll take a little bit of time to get that secured. We don't have a bid in place for concrete pipes.
Did they?
We have, we have ACCA bid, but they don't have an eighty-four inch.
There was no joint, we wouldn't have been sent out for concrete, though.
The ACCA?
No, I'm talking about, we didn't send them.
We haven't bought concrete pipe.
Dustin, can you get a arch pipe in concrete? You don't have to be eighty-four inches tall, wouldn't that help a lot if we're gonna pull the head wall?
Yeah.
And we wouldn't have to be able to rub it quite as much either, there, which is, uh, that's why.
I think we'd have to pay a little bit more for the arch pipe, but I think it would, in the long run, be cheaper.
Yeah, we do that.
Well, uh-
Well, my experience with metal pipe is about fifteen years, though, you're gonna get out of them, and depends on the water that runs through them and the, whatever's around them, farm land and different things that flow through them, but they're not gonna last that long, the concrete, as long as it don't separate us there.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I, I really like that idea, I think that's, that's a wonderful idea and decision. Let me ask this, Dustin, you know, typically, I, I don't know that there's any legal requirement for this, but typically, you know, we put on the agenda to request bids of this nature, however, if no one objected, I don't think there'd be any legal reason that you couldn't go ahead and request the bid and bring it back to the Commission for consideration and approval. Any legal prohibit, prohibit that?
No, it's just a-
And the reason I say that is to remind everybody, you know, we won't have our business meeting next week, it's delayed a full week, so we're looking at almost two weeks before we'd even put the bid out. If we could go ahead and let Dustin, I don't know that we could be ready to award a bid by that time, or not, so.
Did you?
Okay, but, but, would there be any objection to Dustin just going ahead and working on this, gentlemen? On getting, on getting a bid out, I don't think, no, no legal prohibition?
Do we have to bid that, considering the ACCA don't have a bid for it, since they do?
Straight up. Who would we expect to bid on that, Dustin?
Foley, pre-cast out of Clinton.
Okay. If we purchase it-
Do you anticipate on one of that costs of, Dustin, eighteen thousand dollars?
The pipe would be over fifteen thousand dollars.
Spicy number.
That's the reason I asked, if we bid it out, got a no bid, it would be free to go purchase lowest cost, correct? It would have been that out last year, and there was a no bid?
Dustin, Hanson still in it?
They have, Foley has a plant in Coleman, is that the way you call it?
I didn't know.
Hanson, is that what she said? I thought she said handsome.
How long is that pipe?
Uh, I mentioned thirty feet, I mean, we could probably do twenty-four feet if, if that's what you guys wanted, thirty feet just allows you more room for head-
I'd do thirty, but, that's gonna be the-
With a pipe that tall?
Access, access, trucks and drivers, so.
Judge, the only time the Commission would need to vote is when Dustin would commit.
You're right, yeah, and certainly that'd be brought back to the Commission for a, for approval.
You could, your staff can bid any project or any item without formal approval because of that reason.
Okay, yeah, no, no purchase be made without Commission approval. Well, I tell you guys, I'm, I'm excited about this, let me tell you, that one thing that we will need to think about is that road actually will need to, to be named, and one of the things that the, uh, two landowners that have homes there was, you know, very cooperative and excited about is the fact that the pipe would be addressed, which takes that off of them for some time, and it's in bad shape now, and the fact that they could get mail service out to their, you know, to the driveway of their house, is very excited about that. So, they're very cooperative, very nice, very helpful, and, um, Mr. Espinoza, who's out at the end of the road, was just really ecstatic about the fact that he's excited about the things that are happening around their community and, uh, the growth and retail that's coming, so, well, good deal, gentlemen. The, in regard to the item twenty-one at the Frank Green Building, I received a letter just, I believe it was yesterday or day before, from our Superintendent of Education, and, let's take a good look at that, and, and basically, basically what he said was, the Board of Education on May the second awarded the bid for the renovations to Wilford Orland Construction Company, that's the company that we worked with to build the addition at the jail, per the plans that the Commission had reviewed and approved back several months ago. They've had a real hard time getting the project in the money where they could work with it, so they are gonna self-perform the demolition asbestos abatement through Lake Shore Environmental, and they'd like to start as soon as possible, so they requested that the building be vacated by June first if possible, and we somewhat seen that coming, and Commissioner, Commissioner Calvert reminded us of the additional rooms that have recently been renovated at the Family Services Center, so we got the, the move in the process, the extension service will be out of the building by the requested deadline, and will occupy those offices at the Family Services Center, until which time they can relocate to our new facility at Cleveland. But, I wanted to note that there's, the Board of Education expresses appreciation for the collaboration of the County Commission and them on this project, this opportunity to allow the Blount County Board of Education to better service employees and students for many years to come, so, that, that's where we are there, and I think they're in good shape. Okay, jumping on to, gentlemen, is anything else that needs to be added under new business that we're aware of? Yours, I will put on the engineer.
Yes, sir. Judge, I have something.
Yes, sir.
Um, after the, we had, I'm gonna figure out how to start this. With our circuit judge, might ask the attorneys for this, but I want to make sure I can call these names out about what I've talked to y'all about already, our circuit judge and two attorneys.
That's a public record, Commissioner.
Okay, so we have our circuit judge, Judge King, and we have Brett King and Brad Green from King, Green and Dobson Law Firm. The Bar Association sent some findings out, or released the findings on the two attorneys, and in their findings, it talks about our circuit judge, and it talks about what he did to some of the commissioners right now that are still up here. And, I, I mean, it goes on and on, but it started off with the subdivision on Berry Mountain, the subdivision regulations, and Judge King sent a letter to the homeowners, told them that they were in violation of the subdivision regulations, and he did that as Stephen King, he didn't put Judge on front of it, and then he intends to send us a letter, maybe the same day, I think, is that right, Judge Green?
Approximately, so.
Sent us a letter telling us that we need to do something about it and do our job, pretty much. Well, in the meantime, he's doing not his job, but he's making stuff, packets and things like that, sending them out, and based on that, I'm asking, I'm asking this Commission to go along and let's file a complaint against Judge King to the Judiciary Committee and the Bar Association, and let our attorneys do that.
Okay, any, any discussion on this matter?
I have to agree with him, that, I think there was a vendetta set out against Commissioner Calvert as a Commissioner, wasn't just any one person, but based on the, the trail that he had left from starting on the subdivision regulations that we didn't apply those correctly, he followed that trail, went on far as giving me a filing suit against me, and from there, went all the way to Spring Court. And then after that, a little breakdown on what your story is, after that, two attorneys from Green, King, Green and Dobson had set out also a vendetta against me for not putting him back on Burnham Waterboard, there's a trail of that. I made my complaints to the Bar Association on two attorneys, I made my complaint to the judge, and I agree with Commissioner Washington, this County Commission needs to file a complaint also to the Bar Association and to Judiciary System.
And I completely agree.
It is a shame that this kind of act came from two attorneys across the street, vendetta against me there and to the office of the Circuit Court, Judge Stephen King, this Commission does not need to be blackmailed in any way and be forced by hand in any way, so I agree that we would need to send a letter.
And, Mr. Chairman, I, I wasn't gonna put this on, I've been waiting on somebody else to put it on and take some action with it, nobody has, so I brought it up today. But I have a packet right here for attorneys they can look at, it's got the complaints in it, it's got everything about everything I just said in there, but I'm asking the Commission to go along with me and let's file a complaint against him and, for the Judiciary and the Bar Association.
Oh, I, just a couple of quick points I'd, I'd like to, to make, Commissioner. One is that now, our county attorneys have expressed here today that these issues are issues of public record and they're public, we're not discussing anything that's not a public record.
No, sir.
Okay, and that further, where if you're proposing the complaint to be filed against the circuit judge, I, I think the proper venue for that will be the Judiciary Commission.
Yeah, if they, if they find fit, they will send it on to the-
That's correct. I don't know that the Bar Association has anything to do with the circuit judge.
I'd still like to send them one.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, gentlemen, will have any-
The, the problem I have, we're running behind in court supposedly upstairs, but he has time to find, to do what he needs to do against commissioners, but he can't, he can't find to get the court cases through, and, you know, I have a real problem with that, because people, I have, I hear people all the time in Blount County talking about, they got court, get canceled, it's postponed, it's moved, they can't do it, two years out, we're dealing with somebody right now, goes on and on.
Okay, well, we'll have any discussion the Commission might want to have. Well, we'll have any discussion the commission might want to have, uh, and the request is that this would be on the, um, business meeting agenda that we formally have a motion second to set forth, um, the, the request that we make this complaint and that our county attorneys give us guidance there in doing it the right way and so-
And if we need to, we can get Mr. Dillard involved. I don't know if he needs to be involved, but I, I wanted to.
No, we, we represent you. We can assist your efforts if whatever you vote on like that. So, um, I would recommend that if it's from the commission, that it be from the commission to me, so not necessarily, um, any signature from either Jeffery, but it be from the commission as a sure.
Sure, sure, sure.
I recommend that.
Yeah.
Do y'all see there's a complaint there? By what y'all know about it, what y'all read?
Well, and there are certain aspects that I would rather not discuss in public, um, but-
Well, I would say we can go to executive session, but I don't think we can talk about that in executive session, so.
That's correct.
Let's, let's hear it out.
That's correct.
Another question I have, is it not a fact that in order to run for circuit judge, you have to have an attorney? You have to be licensed attorney to be able to run for a circuit judge?
Yes, sir. You, you have to be, uh, a member of Good Stanhorne State Bar and-
Does that not bring the Bar Association into it?
No, that, once you get it, once you get elected, though, you don't come under the purview of the bar. I think to be a circuit judge, God help me, is, is there's a certain amount, there's a statute, a certain amount of time you have to practice. I don't recall off the top of my head, it's two, five or ten years, I can't recall, but there's a certain amount of time you have to practice and you can run for bid.
And, and the Bar Association said that it is possible that they send it to the Judiciary Committee, but they couldn't tell us if they did or didn't. So, without them saying yes or no, I'd like to send something out there.
I, I would recommend that you send, you know, if you're sending them anything, make a copy of it, that you, to let, put them on notice that it's been filed with the Judicial Acquarian Commission if that's, if that's the vote of the council or the commission.
Okay, um, any further discussion on the fact that we'd be adding this to the agenda and it would be voting on it on, uh, May the seventeenth at our meeting? And, uh, if, um, if Judge King wanted to address the commission in any way in regard to that, he could request to be on the agenda that day. Fair enough.
I don't need to speak with him.
I think it's a good thing because it would air out a lot of things between the trail that he had went after the commission to the court, to the ask committee to resign, and also Brett King, attorney from, uh, King, Green, adoption, actually getting the scheme together and actually turning an audio loose against me to get the county against me over the sheriff's department, this scheme that he put together and also gave to Birmingham Water Board to enhance that. We're not asking to send anything to the Bar Association against King and Green, uh, King and Green.
No, this is, no, this is for Stephen King.
That, that reprimand has already happened.
Those are factual evidence is what I asked the bar. They said they're factual evidence, what they put in their report, what they put in their findings. And those facts say that he did it.
So, based on that, it's a blackmail against this commission, not just one commissioner, it's blackmail against this office. And I think that's what commissioners-
It, it irritates me that it's just taken this long for nobody, just everybody to sit back and we have a judge sitting up here, not, just sitting up here going to work every day, nobody saying nothing about it, everybody's keeping it hush, hush. Why? Nobody has done nothing.
We have two attorneys that still practicing office upstairs on with a judge that actually formed an illegal act. Is that not the way y'all see it?
I'm disagreeing, oh, Commissioner.
Anyways, I'd like to be put on the agenda for the next business meeting. See if it meets approval.
Okay, any further discussion, gentlemen? If not, we will, um, add that to the agenda for, uh, our May seventeenth business meeting. Okay, that puts us on to our reports, uh, from our county engineer and Dustin, I kind of put some, something on there because I wanted you to give us a review there. I know you're working on preparing a bid invitation that was approved by the commission back last January on the excavation work for this project, so if you just give us a little up to date on that, I appreciate it.
Sure, we, uh, are currently working on the finishing of the site plans. As soon as we have those, uh, finished, we will put it out to bid. Uh, right now, we're ten and hopefully scheduled to open those bids, uh, before the June commission meeting, so we're hoping to have, uh, a bid award ready for the June commission meeting.
Awesome, good. Okay, and then, uh, Commissioner Tranel, you had something regarding the craft funds?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'd like to ask for a reimbursement, uh, that we can look at on the seventeenth from the craft funds for, uh, rebuilt Alabama funds. And, uh, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand. Uh, we've got it all turned in to Dustin and he'll have almost two weeks to review it and make sure it's all in order.
Okay, very good. Any reports from county attorney?
I don't have anything, sir.
Okay, alright. Anything, gentlemen, else that we need to add before we run through our announcements? One thing I will note is, uh, the commission did give, uh, approval for, uh, the Boy Scout Charter, uh, up at Palisades Park pursuant to approval of the board and pursuant to authorization by our county legal council. And, um, we're working on that. They have sent an insurance certificate that, uh, uh, Ms. Sheriff is reviewing and from there we'll continue. That's not completely done, but it's a process.
I should have been in my report, Judge, that, um, I wanted Scott to weigh in on that. I think we need something a little more detailed than, than, than the last couple of agreements and, and candidly, he's a much better document writer than I, so I wanted him to weigh in on that.
Okay, but we're working on it, making progress to get that to conclusion. Okay, as noted, our next business meeting will be on Tuesday, May seventeenth. We'd like to announce that on, uh, May twelfth, there's an evening, uh, for friends at the Public Library at Blountsville that they'd like to invite you to. We also have a public hearing proposed or, or scheduled, not proposed, scheduled, uh, prior to our June fourteenth, uh, commission meeting to, uh, consider vacating a portion of Kyle Lane down in District Four. And so, our next commission work session will be on June ninth and next business meeting will be on June fourteenth. Any further announcements? If not, I think we're done in less than an hour. Almost less than an hour.